Keith's not here.
Where did Keith go?
We have to go get more copies. I'm sorry, we're waiting for the Board Attorney again. Thank you all for being so patient. I know this isn't how you expected to spend your evening.
Oh, I understand now. She meant she couldn't get it up here.
Right.
Okay.
So that's why we have... To begin this evening's special board meeting. This special board meeting of December 10, 2014 is now called to order. The time is 7:49 PM. At this time, we request that all cell phones and/or pagers be turned off or put in the silent mode. We would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes public comment and one item under superintendent's recommendation and one item under good cause. Mr. Martin, would you please address the recommendation for good cause?
This recommendation concerns a complaint referred to the school board by the Department of Education Inspector General directing that an investigation report be provided within 30 days after receipt, so that will occur before the next school board meeting, and that's why it's brought as good cause tonight to accomplish that deadline.
I find that there's good cause to proceed with that item, so... Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card, the school board chair, Ms. Morgan, will provide you an opportunity to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room. During public comment time, the board does not respond to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, and may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Time-lapse for speakers, three minutes. Ms. Morgan, I have seven cards this evening.
Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to speak and did not fill out a card? Anyone on the left side? Mr. Fox. Please call the cards, Mr. Martin.
Speakers, Robert Schaefer.
... director for Fair Test, the National Center for Fair and Open Testing, and a 15-year full-time resident of Lee County. I want to congratulate you on the tenor of the conversation during the workshop. We were very pleased to hear so many board members commit themselves and their board to continue working on this issue at a meeting early in the coming year and to take action around district-mandated testing, as well as a resolution before you. You heard my comments last night, so I won't repeat them. Our concern, and it's one of strategy, not of substance, is that going for a lowest common denominator resolution, asking the Lee delegation only what they will minimally accept, is a strategy that has proven to result in less progress than is possible. The assessment reform movement in Lee County and Florida and nationally is exploding across the country. No one would have predicted six months ago that this board, or the Florida School Boards Association, or many states would have taken the kind of action that they did. By confining your resolution to what you believe the Lee delegation will accept now asks too little and doesn't provide grounds to push them to move further. What we would recommend is that you ask for what you really want and what the constituents have asked you to do, a wholesale revision of Florida's assessment system. We agree that the Lee County delegation is not ready to go with that as of this moment, but asking for it and hearing them say no publicly will provide an organizing focus for the parents and educators and community leaders to start pressuring them and move them. That has precisely what has happened and brought about fundamental changes in other districts. Can you imagine that a state like South Carolina repealed its graduation test last year? It's even more conservative on these types of issues than Lee County, yet they moved because public pressure forced them to do so. So what we urge you to do is to ask for what you want. If that is Senator Mumford's resolution or the Florida School Boards Association statement that you voted for, ask for that as an opening initiative. Preemptive compromise results in less wins than are really possible. So our bottom-line message is clear. The Lee County School Board should keep the heat on Tallahassee by adopting the strongest possible resolution tonight. What you have is a good start, but it does not go far enough. We look forward to working with you and pressuring our delegation to take the lead in Tallahassee as you have in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Your time's up, sir. Next speaker is Chris Quackenbush.
Hi, I'm Chris Quackenbush. Ditto for Bob. We have the exact same feeling. We've been traveling around the state, visiting with legislators for over a year. We've been to Tallahassee many times, and we have been educating them and driving our forces to understand the issues as well. And one thing I have learned from all the school board members I've talked to is that you would like local control. Local control is what we want as parents and grandparents of our children. There are people who would say negotiating with yourself is a good idea at the start because you just want to get what you can get, and you might lose everything if you don't go for... if you go for too much, and I completely disagree and agree with what Bob has to say. Our proposal should be what we need to stop harming our children and helping them instead to develop their potential, not what we can get away with getting from a legislator who's intransigent to our needs. So in these bills that we've been working on with legislators already, and they're nearly completed, we've been asking for local control. We would like you to include in your proposal to roll back the standards to 2009 and allow the Commissioner of Education to provide us with a list of the best-of-breed standards, such as Massachusetts, California, and the like, and then we can choose at the local level what our standards should be. Also, to provide us a list of nationally normative tests that the Commissioner would approve, such as the Iowa Basics or whatever, that would be administered once a year in grades three through 10, and that would be the only one. We would develop a state test. We could use what we had talked about in the consortium meeting, a list of tests that we could use. We also think it's much more beneficial to us monetarily and also for data-mining purposes to have paper-based tests, not computerized tests. Paper-based tests are easy to administer. We don't have to do the round robin, finding somebody to proctor tests, and the complexity and cost that it adds to use computerized testing is enormous. So using paper-based tests seems to be a simple request and easy to administer. All data that's gathered should be disaggregated. We don't want any aggregated data, any identifiable individual data to be going to the state or the federal government. So those are some of the simple things we would like to do in order to restore local control. So our district has the choice of our standards, our curriculum, our materials, and our tests, and we will have true local control back so the parents can have a person to talk to at the end of the day about their needs. Thank you very much for the work you...
Next speaker is Bob Valenta.
Thank you. Normally, I prepare a speech because I don't shoot from the cuff that well, but I didn't prepare one tonight because I wasn't sure what was going to be said here. After listening to what you said, Mr. Toyber, I understand you're an attorney, and I would just ask you this. If you're in court, and I don't know if you're a litigator, but let's assume you are, and say you're in court against another lawyer, either a lawsuit or divorce case or something like that, do you go in asking for what you think the other side would be willing to give up, or do you go in, shoot for the moon, and let the judge knock that down to what he thinks is fair? I already know the answer to that question. It's rhetorical. Or do you go into the courtroom and say, "Can I have..." Listening to your comments tonight, that's what you're asking the legislature. "What can I have?" The Lee County School Board is what's in charge of this school district, not the state BOE. I know they think otherwise, but it's really not true, and they can pass a law that says it, but it doesn't make it so. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Orthodoxan.
I'm going to reiterate what everybody said here. I am strongly opposing to going in with a very weak bill. Knowing our legislator, knowing what goes on up in Tallahassee, you might as well not even go up there. If we do not go in strong, demand our rights, demand that our children are protected, we're wasting our time, and you all know this. You know this. Now, I'm going to tell you, I am a grandmother. I am raising my grandchild, who was a straight A student up until this year. I am now dealing with a fourth grader that cries every morning, hates school, hates going to school. Everything is testing, testing, testing. There is no teacher one-on-one time to these children anymore. Everything is getting prepared for the next test. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. We're abusing our children. We're making them hate education. So let's get some more dropouts. Instead of encouraging them to learn, we're pushing them into dropping out. I see it coming. I talk to parents all over Lee County. I'm part of the Stop Common Core and opt-out of testing. I am out there talking to the community. Just because they can't be sitting here every night, that you have your meetings, they are very concerned, and if you look at the data, more and more people are pulling their kids out of these public schools and going for homeschooling. I read a report tonight that we lost 20 teachers. Twenty teachers quit in the last three weeks because of Common Core and high-stakes testing. Something to think about. We're losing good educators because they're not allowed to teach. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Padrika.
Hi. Thank you very much for the measured approach that you're taking on this issue. You are not reacting to emotion. You're using your brains, you're not following your hearts, and I really appreciate that. I want you to know, as a parent of three elementary school children, that I support assessments. My children are not tested too much. I support the high-stakes nature of the test because I believe it prepares them for the high-stakes nature of real life. Steve, what are the dates you want me in Tallahassee? I'll be there. To the board, how can I support you in this endeavor? What do you need me to do? I've called Representative Rodriguez and Fittzenhagen, and I have not had a response. I've tried a couple of times to reach out to them, and they've not responded to me. So tell me what to do, and I will support you in this. And finally, Dr. Graham, this is off-topic, but I don't believe everything that's in the newspaper, and I thank you for what you do for my children.
Next speaker is Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the school board. First, I'd like to say we all send our thoughts and prayers to Mayor Fisher. I texted her earlier today, and she's in the hospital, but she's feeling a little better and hoping to come home tomorrow. Let me say to my friends here who advocate this stuff about testing, it's important that you guys explain to them that when you're a legislator, you only get to sponsor about six bills. So I think you're being, especially Steve, I think you're being very reasonable and sensible to not shoot for the moon, because if you shoot for the moon and you don't get anybody to sponsor your bill, what do you got? You just got a bunch of people arguing and nothing much to do. So I think you're being very sensible in that regard and trying to come up with a solution. But let me say something about this thing that you have on the agenda about the superintendent. I can remember speaking out on this issue when it first happened, and I said at the time that it defied logic how you could save this type of money, but you added so many positions. So I know some of the board members may not like Alberto. Alberto may not be popular in this building, but sometime a clock is right twice a day, and I think the man is on target on something, and that is when you look at the reorganization plan. And I had lots of problems with it. My first problem with it is that it made it so that no minorities would be in any leadership position, and I spoke about that at the time. But the second problem, I thought, was the fact that you were creating so many... You know, we got, like, directors of toilet paper, directors of everything. I mean, I'm being facetious, of course, but, I mean, she created so many positions. And I told Jeanne and Kathleen at the time, y'all need to look at this stuff. You don't take no superintendent's comments at face value. You didn't do it for Burke, and you ain't entitled to do it for her. So I really do think that we need to take these allegations serious, the same as when the dean of the school board made allegations about the Title I funds with Dr. Burke, where it turned out she was right and that the other folk were wrong. So I would just say, don't prejudge this investigation. I would encourage a superintendent to not have your media spokespersons disparage Dr. Rodriguez and say he's a disgruntled employee and all of that other stuff. Let's just wait, take a deep breath, see what investigation goes. One thing we got to know, either she did it or she didn't do it. Either the law was broken or wasn't. Thank you very much.
Last card is from Tess Brennan.
Good evening. I want to thank you for working forward and working with us and trying to get to where we know we need to be. I was very happy when I heard all of your comments the first meeting of August, when all five of you up there stood up there or sat there and told us about how you understood how it's hurting the children and how we must make a change. I ask that as we're going forward, that we find ways to make sure that everybody is informed, that we don't have ill-informed people. I think you know by now that when I make an accusation or I state something, I look for the facts to back it up so that you know that I'm not misinformed or ill-informed, but that I've done the research and I have that information to present to you when I make my statement. We have Fair Test, Teach Not Testing, and myself have asked for months now to present a briefing or a workshop on testing. We've asked for information on what the different tests are and what they mean, and I perceived personally this evening that there was some misunderstanding about what the PERC test was and that we were just eliminating a test to eliminate it without realizing that the whole purpose of that PERC test was to help those children who could not get past the FCAT or the, I'm sorry, the Algebra EOC. So I'm asking again for that briefing meeting that we've requested repeatedly. Finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about the children and which children we are fighting for. The Utah, in Utah, the minority ranking is 23.5% for their demographics. In Lee County, our minority percentage is 55.7. They're the majority. The minority students on the sage, which was written by AIR, the FSA company, was 80% failure rate. In Utah, they have a 38% rate of economic disparate... disparate, you know what I mean?
Disparity.
Disparity, thank you. It's a 38%. In Lee County, we're 70%. They're half of that rate that we are. The economically disadvantaged in Utah had a 74% failure rate on the sage exam. My blog today has all of the links for you to follow that, stopthestingabuse.com, so you can find my sources, which are your state and our school board sources. So when I said, when you say that we're doing this for the children, I'm up here fighting for the minority, who is the majority, and I'm up here fighting for those whose parents work more than one job.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Your time is up, ma'am. Those are all the cards, Ms. Morgan.
Mr. Fox.
Thank you. I want to start, you know, I come to all these meetings, and I haven't really said a whole lot about Common Core, but tonight I wanted to give my view of it, and knowing that I'm not an expert, I'm not an educator, and not in the classroom, but I do have some observations I'd like to share. First, I'd like to agree with Ms. Quackenbush about the paper being important for the test. I think the kids like it better, and certainly the implementation. I mean, my wife teaches, and it's always a disaster. It never seems to get done. But I think that Common Core has some good things, and you want to be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. There are certain aspects of it that are desirable. But what I see is, in seeing all this, is the implementation is what a lot of it. So I would propose, and maybe the board could work with the legislator or just pass and just say, "This is what we're going to do, you know, local, this is our school district", is just give the state five days, and what I would think is, like, one at the beginning of the school year and then one day at the end of each quarter, that you just say, "Okay, state, this is your day. You email us the test, we'll print it out, we'll give it to the kids, we'll grade it, and we'll send you the results." And then the other 175 days that are in the school year are ours, and stay out of it. We'll do what we do on those days, and that one day, we will set aside and give you testing, whatever it is, math, science, English, you know, whatever they want to test. They can use it for assessment, they can use it for progression, they can use it for whatever they want to use it for. So here's, the state does their thing at their pace, and we're doing our thing, and because they're trying to, they're coming up with an idea, and then they want to pass it down, and then everybody's scrambling to implement it. It just is all gets, you know, it's very large, it's very hard to manage, and just maybe establish some kind of structure that they can follow, that you can follow, that everybody has certain, you know, this is the day. Get us the information. If you get it to us on time, we'll administer it. If you don't, then we'll catch it the next nine weeks. And I think that would help everybody, the teachers, the administrators, the students, the parents. It may be a little structure where everything can just slow down, and if parents don't want their kids to take it, that day, they just don't bring them to school. They'll know when it is when the school year starts, and they can plan accordingly, and, you know, I would, maybe if you can slip it in your thing tonight, or just say, "This is what we're going to do. This is our board." I'm all for getting the state out of the school, finances, you know, policy, teaching. The more they're out of it, and the more we do our own thing. I wish we'd just write our own tests and forget them altogether. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham?
I recommend the board direct its legislative consultant to request the local delegation to file and sponsor legislation to reduce the overall amount of state mandated testing. I want to add excluding the PERC, and eliminate high-stakes penalties for students in schools for no less than two years while the new state tests are fully vetted.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Toyber, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Is there any discussion? Mr. Toyber.
Yes, and I appreciate everybody's comments. I'd just like to make a couple of points. First off, we already have supported, through the FSBA, the FSBA docket, so we're 100% behind that. So that's, that bill's going to get there, so you have that. We have the moon. We actually have the uber-moon because we have the Mumford bill, so that's the uber-moons, and we also are supporting that bill. We also have our consortium that have, with 11 counties, which has a different impetus, which actually has probably more chance of success than the FSBA because the FSBA actually has this lawsuit pending against the legislature, so there's kind of a, you know, we'll just, you know, dig our trenches, even if it's not even making any sense. So the consortium, to me, is probably the biggest impetus for a moonshot, and we'll be there. And for us, I will be soliciting all of our legislators, the local delegation, to jump on board with that, and I believe all the rest of the board members will say in their time that they will do that as well. So I believe you have that moonshot there. Ours is just kind of like, you know, the backup gun, and that we can also get our legislators on. That's not to say that this, that what we've said is our stopping point. It's the, as Bob termed it, the cornerstone. If we can get more things as we continue to progress, and as Ms. Quackenbush says, as the momentum continues between now and March, we can always, you know, we may get riders from other counties, and that bill may grow, but at least it gets us onto the floor. And for us to get there in Tallahassee and get on the floor and get the attention and get, like what you said, you know, you talk to legislators, but they're just kind of nodding their heads and they're not really listening, we need to have a forum. And so that was my goal and the board, you know, that I, what we brought forward, is to get us a forum, and so I'll be supporting it in today's structure.
Any other comment? Mrs. Dozier.
And I understand what everyone has said about this being a, I don't think y'all have used the term, but I'm going to use the term watered-down version of what we're asking for. And I have been involved in legislation for a long time, and I know that in order to accomplish something, you have to have something that you're willing to support, and you've got to have knowledge from someone that they're willing to support it as well. Ahead of time, before the bills get written, the individuals that tote the bill or tote the water, if you will, they have already had conversations, and basically, I was already asking questions that I already knew the answers to. They have already said, this is it. This is where I'm, and I see you shaking your head, but I know that, I know the way it works, and in order to have something, I think that this is the document that the board supports, so I'm going to support it this evening as well. That doesn't mean that I'm going to stop. That doesn't mean that I am not going to be in Tallahassee. I already am supposed to be representing the... I already am supposed to be representing the consortium with this issue and with this issue on the platform. And I will be, I will be going to Tallahassee with members from all of the different counties that are in the consortium. And hopefully, we will have parents and we will have people that are interested in this topic along with us, and we can speak at the hearings, when they have education hearings. And we can share with them what our concerns are, share with them what some of the issues are that have been raised over the last, and I'm not going to say several months, because this isn't just something that started several months ago, but instead, it began several years ago. I began hearing from parents about the high-stakes testing. So I will be supporting this this evening, but this is not, this is not the end. We will continue to lobby for legislation through the consortium.
Thank you. Mrs., oh, okay. Board members, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Mr. Martin, would you please state your recommendation?
Yes, Ms. Morgan. Morgan, board members, I have one recommendation this evening, which is to approve the recommendation to initiate investigation of allegations made in the complaint letter concerning Dr. Graham referred by the Department of Education Inspector General's Office. The Inspector General's Office has forwarded a complaint alleging inappropriate actions by Dr. Graham in the performance of duties as superintendent. I'm recommending the school board direct the school board attorney to coordinate an investigation of the allegations by an independent party outside the school district. Recommend the school board use the services of Attorney Thomas Gonzalez for this purpose. Mr. Gonzalez is recognized as an expert in the state of Florida in employment law matters. He has agreed to provide the service to the school district at a rate of $175 per hour. It's estimated that the cost of his services to complete the investigation would be $10,000. So this evening, I recommend the school board direct the school board attorney to coordinate an investigation of the allegations made in the complaint concerning Superintendent Dr. Nancy Graham, referred by the Department of Education Inspector General's Office, to be performed by Attorney Thomas Gonzalez at an estimated total cost of $10,000.
Board members, you have heard the attorney's recommendation. Do I have a motion, excuse me, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Toiber, seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And that concludes our business for this evening. Board member comments. Mrs. Dozier.
I thank everyone that's here. I thank the board for working together to get through this agenda. And we'll just move on from here. Thank you. And again, happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Toiber.
Thank you for everybody's coming. I didn't get to mention, but up at the FSBA, all the other districts are waiting for Ms. Dozier in January to have that task force, so we will be advocating very hard at different approaches. We will be shooting for the moon through the consortium. I promise you, you will hear me just as vocal up there. If you watch Tallahassee TV, you'll see. But I appreciate your support also for our local bill. Let's at least get, let's get some progress. Let's get moving.
LaRiviere.
Again, I thank you for being here. I know that you would have rather been out there Christmas shopping this evening or Hanukkah shopping, but I'm glad that you took time for being here. I do care about the kids. And the kids that I mostly worked with were the minority kids and the struggling kids. And it's a tough road, and we've got a lot of backtracking and a lot of changes that we need to make that have happened over the years. I'm glad that we finally have parents and community members that are being active about it and being advocates for it. Teachers, superintendents, district personnel have been fighting this cause for a while. You've added to some of the voice. I appreciate assessments. I appreciate assessments for giving me guidance on how to teach children. I still think of myself as a teacher. I appreciate assessments where the students can look at and chart their growth, and they know where they need to be the next time, and they start thinking about what they want to do. Kindergartners say, "By the end, I'm here right now. I've got this letter. I'm up to, I've got these letters, and these are the letters I want to have by the end of next quarter." And they start making their plans, and they think about it. And they're so astute. They really are. But we have a lot of people hurting, and so we all have to be sensitive. I appreciate, I've got it. Shannon, what's your last name? But, that's it. One day, I'll get all the last names done back. I appreciate Dr. Graham forwarded the email that you've sent to the principals, asking them to look at the assessments that were given and reminding them of what's out there for the district and to make sure that there wasn't too much going on during this time and reminding them that there was time for the end of the quarter afterwards. So thank you, because we need to make sure that everybody's all on board and listening the right way. And again, wish all of you a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and mommies and daddies enjoy loving on your kiddos for two weeks, and then we'll enjoy loving on them when they come back.
Mr. Martin.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
I just am compelled to remind everybody, I meant to do this last night, there is another week of school. I just want to be clear on that. I also, I know you all know this, but for the public's sake, Senator Motford is also the CEO of the Superintendents Association, so they are also being represented in this effort to make some changes to the accountability system. I appreciate your leadership in this matter.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board are on January 13, 2015. There is a briefing meeting at 2:00 PM and a school board action meeting at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mrs. Dozier.
Seconded.
Seconded by, I did hear you.
Seconded by all of us.
All in favor? Aye. Thor's.